Okay, welcome to the August 15th Board of Selectments, Soho Commissioners Meeting. The first item is an executive session. Could I hear a motion please?
I move to enter into executive session under the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 21a, Part III, to discuss the contract negotiation with the Union Personal Police and to discuss the strategy with regards to litigations. Town versus Robert Toddian, Chair declares that an open meeting discussion may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining positions of the public party.
Second. Have a motion in a second. Roll call.
Mr. Rajesh Kumar.
Yes.
Mr. Hadley.
Yes.
Mr. Rucha.
Yes.
Mr. Crowley.
Yes.
And we will be back into open session around seven, seven oh five.
Board of Select and Sewer Commissioners Meeting, first item on the agenda. All members are present. First item is public comment. Hearing none. Next item is approval of minutes. July 25, 2018, regular session.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second and the other discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. July 25, 2018, executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second and the other discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. August 8, 2018, regular session.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second and the other discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstained.
Opposed, nobody. Next is review and vote to approve warrants. Pat, do you want to read that?
I move that we approve the filing warrants for the period covering July 26, 2018, through August 15, 2018. Payable warrant for the town FY 1907. Payable warrant, payroll warrant FY 1904. And municipal light plant warrant FY 1905 and 5A.
Go ahead, your second. Have a motion and a second and the other discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed.
Mr. Chairman, can I make, I made a mistake. I wasn't here for the August 8th, so I should have abstained.
Okay, also, Nancy?
Thank you. Sorry, Mr. Jim.
So, we can, this says 7:15, should we wait or can we do that now?
He's here. It's not a hearing, you can ticket it anytime.
You're up. We weren't even ready. Well, this is to update on recycling center and any other questions we have for you.
Okay.
That's not on me.
It's all good.
What do you got?
Silthick. Pretty boring. Things continue to run well over there. They completed a project to add solar just earlier this summer. And municipal light department was very helpful with them. They did last early this spring, do some reorganization inside the building. The building, the reuse, kind of the swap centers, the challenge over there. It's a very busy place. It was overcrowded, really. So they closed through, I think, late December and into January to kind of spread it out and make it easier for people to get around in there that were having some problems with overcrowding. So that seems to have helped a lot. They are continuing hazardous product collections six times a year over there, which helps the town satisfy, each of the towns satisfy some DEP requirements. So, right now, our original agreement with the board, they've sort of avoided, they'd like to spread the collections out a little more than they do. They've sort of avoided April and November. They wouldn't do them through the winter, but sort of have avoided April and November because there's a clause in the agreement that DCR has with the town that says we won't do any of them in frozen ground condition. So, they would like to do one as early as, you know, late April and into November, just, I think, to spread them out a little bit. They, the DP requirement came into play two years ago, maybe? So they added the two additional collections to get to six. And, but, they find some of them overly quiet because they tend to only be five or six weeks since the previous collection. So, they would like to just spread those out a little bit into later April and into November, just to space them better. They also find, try, they, I think, two years ago, they tried one, sort of in the middle of summer and, you know, not really surprising. It was not a lot of, a lot of traffic. And there's, there's costs involved just to set up for the day, so.
A small window to do it, and you're trying to do them.
Yeah, yeah. And they're trying to, trying to do six so that the towns get their credits with DEP for recycling grants and things like that. And I know West Boylston is one of the towns that definitely.
Would doing it in April and November require a new memorandum of understanding? That's, I mean, what's the, frozen ground is a...
Exactly. And I'm pretty sure that's exactly the term that was, that, you know, the hazardous product collections wouldn't happen in frozen ground condition. So, I don't know. I mean, obviously, I don't think we get frozen ground in November generally anyways. We might get snow, but, you know. So I guess it's just whether the board has any real issue with them looking. It would be for next year, they've already set their schedule for 18.
Yeah, so if this is correct, we have, there's one Saturday, September 15, eight to noon. There's one Saturday, October 6, from 8 to noon. The rest of the site will be closed on that day. And then there's one November 17, from 8 to noon. I'm on the website.
Oh.
So I'm guessing that's...
You already have one in November. I didn't, I guess that was mine.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just, I'm looking at the hazardous schedule for 2018.
Okay.
Household hazardous products, so.
All right. Well, let me, let me check back with them.
Just to let the public know that's, that that's available and...
Okay. I thought they were avoiding November, but, let me check back with them. The other thing differently, they're trying in those collections, so they, in theory, you don't have to, you can dispose, you can dry out and dispose of latex paint. But that's not convenient for people, really, especially if you have, you know, relatively full can of paint to get rid of. So people bring them to the collections anyways, and then they're, they're paying, paying to dispose of it, the residents are, and it's, and it's actually costly to get rid of it with the, with the waste companies. So they have hooked up with a, a new company that does, that tries to recycle the latex paint. And so they're, they're, they're trying that so to see if there's a better way to get rid of it. Because people, even though they give out information about you can save yourself the $4 a gallon, and here's how you can get rid of what's left in your can, and you can open the lid, you can let it dry out, whatever, people don't tend to do that. So, that's probably their newest initiative over there.
So if you have, if you have a can that you've used it, you've painted your house, you just leave it open, dry it, then it can be just thrown...
Right in your trash.
It's regular trash.
So.
Once it's dry.
So that's the, kind of the newest thing they're trying over there. I think that's, that's the bulk of it.
Anybody have any questions in regards to...
I know with the recycling of household products, we're running into issues because most of that stuff went over to China, and they're pushing back on recycling. Are you having any issues with your end?
They are, they, yeah, they are finding that disposal of product is not as easy as it used to be. So they're, they're, they're working harder and still able to get rid of stuff, but yes, it's becoming more challenging to...
So that ultimately result in higher fees down the road, or less product being taken?
I don't know. It's a good question. It really is, because it is becoming an issue where, where the value of products has dropped dramatically, and so it's harder to get rid of them. We'll see how that plays out.
Any question, other questions?
I do have one question. It's not related to the recycling center, but it is for, it's the retention ponds near the reservoirs.
Yep.
Can you explain a little more on that?
Explain them.
How that, how that works?
Well, I guess, I guess if this, if you agree, this is what I've been hearing, is that there's standing water all the time. On the ones that shouldn't be, and people are worried about mosquitoes and things like that.
So, there are, there are parts of it that will have standing water. So the, when the, the water leaves the road, the first basin it goes into will collect, and there will be standing water in that. Those are lined so that if there's a spill on the roadway, it doesn't infiltrate into the ground. So those will hold water. We do check them regularly, our staff does, to our aquatic biologists, to see if, if there is, we are getting any issues with, with mosquito larvae. We have not at this point. So, but those will maintain water, the smaller basins, and then those overflow into the, the bigger infiltration basins.
So the, when, when you get the water in the first basin, it won't go to the second retention?
When it fills towards, when it fills to a certain point, it'll spill.
It looks like the first one is always full.
Yeah, and they, they will hold water. Yep.
So you think the most...
And especially this summer, they will definitely hold water.
There won't be any mosquito issues because...
They, they have been checking, and they've not seen larvae issues in those basins.
You don't spray for them or anything like that?
We do not. We do not.
I mean, the standing water, obviously, is going to breed mosquitoes.
Yep, it can.
I guess, I don't know enough about this, but I don't see many of these basins ever retain water. I thought the object of these are not to, to drain, drain through the...
To ultimately drain. But the smaller ones are lined with a, with a barrier so that if there is a vehicle accident on the road that creates an oil spill, or it'll, it won't, that won't infiltrate into the ground. So it's, it is purposely designed that way.
The volume of the water they've had, these rains, something like that, where's it going to go?
Well, I've heard, I've heard from people that even the peak of the summer this year, that it's been, there's always been water there. And I can't, I mean, I know you check it, but it just seems amazing to me that there's not mosquitoes. You have a little bucket in your backyard, you find the mosquitoes, so. But you're saying it's tested, so the residents can know that.
If there is larva, what are you going to do? Is there any?
We will look into, into what can be done.
You have mentioned, you have said, you know, that you won't be any, you won't be any treatment on that.
No, I think Chris asked, have we sprayed? And we haven't, but we certainly will, would, if we think...
If there is larva, you'll spray?
If we think it's becoming an issue, we will look at what the alternatives are for the...
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
How often do you check for that? Is it like once a month, I mean, with all this rain? Once a week, or is it when it's cold?
Actually, I, I'm no, I'm not 100% sure.
Okay.
But I can ask.
I would just think with the amount, we should, you should be checking more with the amount of rain that we've had is what I would hope for.
I don't want to put you in a spot on this question, but we've talked about it in regards to the, the sidewalk across the reservoir. Do we ever get a, has it been cleaned up? Has the overgrown grass been by...
Butch sent a crew boat to clean it up.
By the, by the town. But I guess an email went to you when we got to that.
Yeah, I mean...
My understanding...
To be perfectly frank, it's not our property. We, part of the reason we recommended in the design that that whole stretch get paved and not just, you know, a narrow sidewalk and then a, and then a grass strip, is because there were issues raised. It's, so it's DOT property within that right of way.
Okay, so we...
Right of way goes to the road. It's DOT property. We had recommended in design, and that's what was built, that, that the whole stretch get paved so that there was less...
It did.
Yeah, and it did. So there was less unkept area.
Yeah, the plan was to have grass between the sidewalk and the wall.
And, and nobody was committing to, you know, to, to maintain it. So, so that was, you know, that was the reason.
So maybe, Anita and Butch, maybe we asked the wrong person? I think he's right. It is DOT.
We can check with, we can check with District 3.
And they were the ones at the meeting that we went to that said, one of the gentlemen said, "Yeah, we maintain sidewalks in other areas." And a couple of the other gentlemen kind of told him to be quiet. But, so we left that meeting with our understanding now. We're, we're doing the plowing, the snow removal on that sidewalk?
Yes.
We are. Now, those are a couple of things. So it's not, you know, you, maybe we need to...
Yeah, and I, I think you guys have always...
Right, but we talked about it when they came here.
Removed snow, removed snow going over there, because I don't think it ever gets done unless, unless...
But they did say, yeah, on the sidewalk. On the sidewalk, but they did say that, "Oh, no, we have areas that we do, we plow them and everything, so it's not yours."
I do remember that.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, we'll go, we'll ask DOT, maybe Representative O'Day, because he was at those meetings. We were both there, and we kind of were surprised.
I remember the conversation.
Yeah. Okay. If there's nothing else, thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Very well.
Thanks, Jim.
EPW Director, you're up next. You have two items, do you know what's on the agenda?
I have, really, I have one item. The abatement has turned into a, more of an investigative thing than I have to do, so I'm going to have to put that on till later.
Put it off for future, okay?
Till I can get my hands around it. It's a little more complicated than the average abatement. And the other one was the lead salt contract. We got a really good price this year. Last year, we paid 71, 70, $71.70 a ton. And this year, we got it for, I got my...
It's 61, 47 a ton? And this is for the treated salt?
Treated salt, 10 bucks more, less a ton than last year, which is great.
That's the green stuff?
That's the green stuff, yeah. And last year, you, just so you'll know, we used 2,300 tons of that for about 109,000, so it'll be 10 bucks less a ton, so. We just have the contract for you to sign, that's...
Yeah, let's...
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
With the green salt, you won't be adding any sand, right? No sand?
I won't say no sand, because if we have icy conditions, the sand does have its use for very icy, when we have ice storms.
Less, less of a sand.
Yeah, last year, we went out with sand, I think...
At the beginning.
Once or twice, and that was it. Very, very little sand last year. Year before, we used more, but this year, last year, we used almost none.
And I'm sure, I'm sure sweeping must have, you must have zipped through neighborhoods.
Yeah, that's, in fact, I have to...
You weren't empty in the truck.
Yeah, it was quick. And we have, I have to do a little thing for the finance committee, because they're curious as to the, the cost of using more salt and less sweeping versus all the sand we used to do and all the sweeping and then all the costs, because it's supposed to be a cost-saving thing, that's how it was presented to them. So I'm looking into that to give them a little report to, to show that it is a cost savings.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I think it's a manpower saving, but those guys are still on the payroll, so it's not like that.
True, but then you have, you have a lot of disposal costs now, because that's sand, you can't just throw it away. You have to have it tested and take it to a landfill, and, so that's a big savings area, which I haven't really generated yet, but that's probably going to be the biggest savings.
Do we need any...
Any, you need a...
Make a motion.
Any, any update on the paving, paving?
Finished Crescent Street today.
Okay, let's just vote on this, and then we can ask any questions.
Make a motion to approve the contract for lead salt?
Second. A motion, second, and the other discussion.
I do have one quick question. Why the decrease in the cost? Is it just because there's that much more out there?
Well, they're a new company. They came out last year for the first year.
Okay, just curious.
And I think they just wanted to keep the contract, because they're, I don't have the second bid, I was going to bring it in to show it to you, but they were very, very low.
Okay, just curious.
Actually, I do that. No, yeah, I did that. The next one was 69. So they left 8 bucks a ton on the table, which is a lot.
Okay, thank you.
A motion and a second, and the other discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. I don't, do I have that?
It's in the signature folder for you to sign.
Okay, we can, any questions?
It's about the pavings, paving update.
They paved over there. Yeah, we paved Crescent today, that's done, which is good, well, the school's open. And, but, the bad thing is they're a little behind because of all the rain and all the other towns that are looking for work done right away. So they, they put us in for the last couple of weeks of September, and he said he would, if anything opens up, he'd come. And I said, "Just give me 24 hours notice so I can get it out to the people, and, you know, come, just let me know."
So you'll be going to the Newton and other things next month?
The new what?
Newton Street.
Yeah, we, they, they couldn't, they're, they bought a milling machine this year for the first year, and they got the milling contract, so they're really green on milling. So it was very slow. Crescent took an awful long time, more than it should have taken, so they never got to Newton. But, yeah, we'll go to Newton and prospect next, and then move on to the other part of town.
And the, the library project is finished there. How did it, I know it's not finished, the other, have you finished both sides yet? Because I noticed cars now parking on...
Now I have to mill the road. Once we mill the road, then we'll put the berm on the other side.
Okay.
And then we'll pave it, and then that'll be done.
So did it add the spots? I was trying to kind of, when I was walking by, trying to figure out if it added.
It didn't add any. I think you might, if you break out even, I think you're lucky.
Right, because we're not doing the driveways. Now, I'm just... Now, I'm just curious, why didn't we go in front of the, probably another four spots or three spots in front of the townhouses there?
Just for cost, I think. It was pretty expensive as it was, and it would have been even more expensive.
Yeah.
We had decided we'd go that far, because that kind of matched what we lost on the other side, so.
So is the plan that people can, from there forward, can they pack on the other side? Or is the whole side going to be non-packed?
Going to the police chief, the whole of the side's going to be, no parking.
It's going to be curbed, it's all good.
Only one side is the parking. Only one side is the parking. Library side is parking.
Right, but I'm saying further down, I know what you're saying, there's going to be a curb, but there's not going to be cars on the other side, so people could still-
Yeah.
So, yeah, that's fine. It looks, I think it looks-
There won't be, there won't be any space to park on the other side, like you said, unless you hop the curb.
Right.
The white line will be-
Will be close to that side.
We'll push everything over a little bit, keep more parking.
Yeah, I think it came up great.
Yeah, once we pave it and the berm's in there-
I think it looks nice and everything grew better.
And I haven't had any complaints from anyone.
No, I think it's fine about it, so, which is good.
Okay. No other questions? Thank you. Consider signing request for watershed determination of applicability for determination on the Garris Gabbini property off Maple Street and Pear Street. What do we got on this?
Sure. So this was put forward to us by Ron Menard, a member of the Cemetery Board. As you know, the Gambaccini property was one of the properties put forward in a request for proposal for the town to consider for acquisition of new space for cemeteries. And the Gambaccini property was chosen to be the first choice of the property. You all toured it. It appears to be appropriate. The test holes that were dug show that the property does have adequate areas that are above the water table so that would work well for burials, full burials. We were, Ron Menard said he was contacted by Vin Vignali advising that the town would need to move forward with a request for a watershed determination of applicability to DCR for that site, because it's within the watershed area. Vinny Vignali had given the form to Ron Menard. Ron has filled it out, as you see in your packet, and Ron is asking the board, the Cemetery Board is asking the board to approve moving ahead with this application. It's basically just asking DCR to review the property and to determine if the use that's proposed would be, you know, acceptable within the watershed area. This would require, if you agree to move ahead with this, and to be quite honest, it's really a step we have to take, but if we agree to move ahead with this, we would have to obtain the permission of the property owner to move ahead. We would have to get a letter from him as owner of the property to authorize us to apply for this determination of applicability.
Anybody have any questions?
Any fee involved in this, or is it just the DCR?
No, there's no fee that I'm aware of. It's nothing stated within the application process.
Make a motion to, will we do sign it?
So you would actually authorize the Cemetery Board to move ahead with this application and to seek the property owner's permission to do so?
Second.
I have a motion, a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Should I should sign under applicant?
We'll wait on that, and we'll determine whether it needs to be Cemetery Board or the Board of Selectmen.
Acknowledgement of receipt of policy and procedures number 3.02 lockup and holding facility.
Amazing amount of paperwork for that.
It is.
Semi-peat is totally incredible.
Yes.
So this is the policy that the chief has been working on, using various samples provided by the state and from other police agencies. This is what we've been waiting for to be put into place so that we could fully use the cells at the new police department. As you can see, it covers everything from, you know, who is in charge of use of the cells. It covers the, you know, who can speak to regards to how the cells are used. It regards to operation and maintenance of how you separate juveniles, females, male prisoners, visual checks that need to be done, the accounting of how you address the costs associated with the expenses of having prisoners in the cells, security issues, how you address medical issues, handling detainees. I mean, it is the full gamut in terms of all aspects of the lockup policy. And the chief is asking you just to approve this so he can get moving. The cells have been used to some degree, but not for overnight. And so if we get this policy in place, then he would be allowed to fully move ahead with use of the cells.
Is this something just one-time thing you have to do?
Yes. Unless he needs to amend it at any point, then it would come back to you with the amendments.
Make a motion to approve?
So, so, yeah, okay, so I have a motion and a, will you accept it?
I'll second.
Any questions for discussion?
Has this been vetted by legal to say yes? Just that's all, the eyes crossed, is all it is? This is good to go?
It's been vetted by the Police Chief's Association Legal, not by Goldman and Page.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just a quick question. I know some of it, it separates females and males, but then on Section F, I've only seen attempts to himself. Does that cover both?
Yes, it would refer to any prisoner.
Okay, okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Detainee, I think, is the correct term.
Okay, well, I just know it was bolded, and when I was reading it earlier, it just kind of popped out at me, because the other ones weren't done that way. Okay.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Recognize and acceptance of the following donations for the Bandstand Committee and to approve expenditures for these funds for general purposes. $500 sponsor from Cultural Council, $141 in free will donations from July 29 concert, $250 sponsor donation from Vignali family.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
It's actually a typo. It should be $200.
$200 sponsor donation from the Vignali family. Do I have a motion? Recognize and accept this. I have a motion. Second. A second, any other discussion?
How many? For $250, also $50.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Discussion regarding asking to join the Berlin-Boilston Public Safety Regionalization Talks. I've spoke to the town administrator in regards to this. I think they have a meeting coming up.
They've had several informal meetings, but there is a formally posted meeting between the Berlin and Boilston selectmen on Wednesday, August 22. I believe in front of you, you have a copy of a document from CMRPC, which talks about the different aspects of what will be discussed over time, and it provides a sense of the scope and the timeline of the discussions that would take place between the communities. This whole issue came up when the fire chief came to me and asked if I'd seen the article in the item about this startup of the talks between Berlin and Boilston. He and I spoke about it, and he was speaking in favor of trying to get to the table to be part of this, because a key part of what they're talking about here is how to address the whole regional ALS issue that we have in terms of providing, you know, all of our paramedic and advanced life support paramedic services for the region. And, you know, he agrees that this is something that all towns equally face concerns about in terms of staffing, response, et cetera. So he thought it would make sense if we could at least get to the table to be part of the discussions. So, you know, obviously, we did not want to move ahead with this unless we had permission of the board to be part of that.
Yeah, I mean, I'd ask if I could, if the board's okay, I'll, the meeting that's coming up, I am available to go, and I'd like to go if the board agrees.
Make a motion to, I guess, join the discussion on regionalization and have Chris as our representative on the 22nd.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Approve next round of community compact best practices.
Mr. Chairman, in front of you, you have a recommendation from me in terms of what I would suggest we apply for. At the end of October, we will be done with our first round of best practices activities that we received funding and support from the Community Compact Cabinet Program. So we're eligible to apply again, once we've completed those, for new best practice areas. And you have all received the packet of the much larger list of the approved best practice areas that the Community Cabinet, Community Compact Cabinet Program is allowing you to take advantage of this year. It includes HR, it includes much more in terms of energy efficiency, much more in education. But when looking through all these and getting some feedback from staff on what they would recommend the town look at for best practices, I'm putting forward a recommendation that we apply for three areas this year. The first one, and these are not in any priority order, but the first one is in waste management, to work to enhance waste ban compliance, to reduce solid waste disposal cost, and increase recycling. And this is in direct response to the ongoing concerns we have about the cost of recycling moving forward, and how do we do this in a way that is cost-effective to the town. The second part of that would be to develop a waste contract for our next procurement process that is fiscally and environmentally and otherwise beneficial to us. The contract we have right now ends in a few years. We're going to need to start looking at this in FY19 so that we can be prepared to go out for another request for proposals from firms. So I think it's timely for us to try to, you know, see what's out there and what we can do in terms of putting together a much stronger, better contract for the town. The second best practice area is financial management, and that is to develop a long-range planning forecasting model beyond the basic expenditure-revenue forecast that I've been doing. But this would be a true model that we could use to plug in different assumptions, and it would help us do some short-term and long-term financial planning to help us make decisions about, you know, proposed policies, even impact on contract negotiations, or different assumptions over multi-year periods. And I think that would be very helpful for the town moving forward. And the last one is under the category of human resources. As you know, the town had previously completed several different compensation studies through the use of a consultant, and none of those resulting recommendations were ever adopted by the town. We're currently finalizing a compensation study in-house, and to be quite honest, it's taken far more time and energy than we had anticipated, and we will not be reaching our full expectations in terms of putting forward strong recommendations for wage adjustments. So I'm recommending that we take advantage of the best practice and get help through Department of Local Services, DOR's Local Services Division, to have them assist with a full classification and wage study plan. The work we've done in updating all the job descriptions will put us in perfect position to be ready to then work with Division of Local Services for the full compensation study. So these are the three areas that I'm recommending. On the back of this page, you'll see some of the items that Pat Crowley had put forward to me as his suggestions for consideration, and his areas included, again, financial management best practices, you know, working to, you know, continue on this area. Second for his was information technology best practices, looking to develop a long-term strategy and looking to see if there was grant money that would assist with that. Business continuity ties in with the, you know, the IT infrastructure improvements. And his fourth one was regionalization shared services. I do think that the town is in very good shape with the information technology piece. Our outgoing IT director did an excellent job in terms of doing some very strategic planning for us, has the system set up in such a way that, you know, we have duplications, so that if there's one area down, it can be picked up in another. And with our new IT vendor, I think we'll be in good shape in terms of appropriate capital planning. Regionalization shared services, I think that's something we can do on our own. We've already talked about that this evening. So going back, I would recommend that we do the areas of waste management, financial management, the long-term planning, and the human resources classification wage study.
Pat, do you have anything you want to add on your-
No, I mean, I don't have any issue with the three that are here. I've just, I scanned through the list. Financial management, we were in agreement on. The other two were fine. And in my list that I had emailed out, it basically said, hey, we've got a new IT group coming in. We're doing a good job. There may be money, because, you know, the new group come in and is going to say, these are the things that you need to upgrade and update. But, I mean, there's, if we get a grant to do any of these three things, that would be good as well, because all three of those things need to be done.
The other good thing is that even if we don't choose the IT component for best practice, we're still eligible to apply for the IT grant under a separate program through the Community Compact Cabinet.
And that would probably be the same in regards to regionalization. There's always grants.
There would always be grants if we seriously decide to pursue.
Okay, so do you need a motion that we accept these three best practices? Anita? Do you want a motion that we-
Yes, please.
Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Your motion is second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Discussion regarding accepting Mason's donation of Old Stone Church stained glass windows for senior center or other. I think this has been in front of the FIS Building Committee.
Yes.
And we, I think, I asked that we brought in front of the Board of Selectmen, because we don't know. I mean, I did, since that meeting, I was at a restaurant, and they have something like this hanging on the wall, and it did look kind of nice. And it wasn't backlit, but it looked nice. So I don't know what the board wants to do. If we accept them, we have to store them somewhere. Have we reached out to the Historical Society in regards to this?
I'm not aware that there's been any discussion yet with the Historical Society. I know that Ray had attempted to contact a member of them. I'm not sure how far that went. But basically, you know, there had been discussion about whether or not it'd be suitable to accept this donation so that these windows could be placed in the senior center. And during the FIS discussion, it was discussed that there was really very little wall space, suitable wall space where these could be hung, and the COA Board, you know, while they were, you know, agreeable to the concept, they weren't strongly in support of the concept. And that was the reason why it was decided to bring this back to you all as Board of Selectmen, so that there could be discussion about whether or not it would be accepted as a gift to the town that could be used perhaps in Town Hall or other town buildings. And there would be some cost associated with this, because the windows would need some restoration. So that would be an item that would be eligible for Community Preservation Act funding. As a matter of fact, the funding had been approved for that purpose before for the Masons, never went through, so it would need to be reapplied for through the town. But it is an eligible item, so it helped to further the cost of any restoration that might need to be done to the windows. But this is being brought to you to make a decision. Do you wish to go ahead and continue the discussion with the Masons regarding accepting donation of some of these windows?
My take on it is, this town has spent, or the state has spent, a lot of money to keep the building that these windows came from standing. That's the symbol of our town. It would be, if the Masons are just going to get rid of these windows, it would be a shame for us to just say, no, we don't want them. Even if we take them and they sit in the cellar for 20 years, and some other Board of Selectmen comes up with a great idea to use these, these are the windows that were from the Old Stone Church. We'd be crazy not to take them in.
Yes, how many windows are there?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know that answer, and I agree with Pat. My only concern is that we store them, and if we do store them for 20 years, how many times do we move them? And if we try to throw them away, if there'll be a cost involved in that, because they're probably lead and all kinds of hazardous. So I would like to reach out to the Historical Society and see. They, I agree with you, but, I mean, what if they come back and say, no, there's really no historic need to keep these in town? I don't think they're going to say that, but-
I know they're not going to say that, because with the CPC, any historical application has to be approved with a letter of endorsement from the Historical Society. The Historical Society approved the grant that we gave to the Masons that ultimately was turned back. So the Historical Society, unless they're going to change their mind over to- So the Historical Society, unless they're going to change their mind over the course of the last three or four years, I would anticipate that they think they have historical value.
Well, the only, I guess the only difference with that one is they were going to stay on that building and be fixed up to be left there. Now they're talking, they must have some that aren't in the building. They must have extras in the basement, I'm guessing. Because they're not knocking down the building or changing.
I don't, I'm not sure.
So, yeah, I mean.
Can we get some more information, see how many actual windows there are, and then maybe bring it up in the next meeting, so figure, I mean, if there's 100 windows, that makes a big difference if there's 20 windows of storage.
When Ray came before the FIS committee, I was under the impression we were talking three or four windows. I couldn't wrong.
I thought it was a lot more than that, to be honest.
Okay. Would the board be all right if I reach out to the Historical Society, maybe we get, take it, the two of us or somebody from the Historical Society, take time to look at it, and then I can report back to the board exactly what it is, and part of that, I'll talk to Ray, because he already did this. So if that's all right, and then we can get an idea. I don't, again, I don't know if it's the buildings that are currently in place, that they're taken out. I know one of the Historical Society was that big window at the top they really wanted to fix. I doubt that's coming down.
But I, that's not the one I think we should take.
I mean, you know, if it's a window like the size of these, I mean, it would look kind of nice hanging up somewhere, you know, again, I saw it, and it looked good where, you know, where I was, but I know a lot of them are.
The other thing you find out, if we take one, you have to take them all.
Right.
All or nothing?
That's what you got to ask them. They might, they want you to take everyone.
I'll try to, yeah, I think I'll try to get a lot, get information, if not the next, next meeting. I'll let you know if we should put it on the next agenda, if that's all right with the board.
I'll make a motion for Chris to be our designated for that.
I'll second it.
Yeah, I'm going to talk to Ray to start with, because Ray already did this. Okay, I have a motion, a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Discussion regarding establishing permit fee and application for filming of movies, et cetera. Do I need a motion to put the air conditioner on? I know. Do I need a motion to put the air conditioner on? We're dying in here.
She's, she's.
So if we, if we have a motion, then it'll be four to one.
I know. It's fine.
Can we maybe put it up a little?
No, go ahead.
Thank you.
No.
So Anita, if you can just tell us what we're looking at here.
So about a year ago, I had attended a manager's meeting, and there was a representative from the Mass Film Office. It's an official state agency that was established to promote the filming industry within Massachusetts. And the woman who made the presentation was urging all communities to make sure that we posted all of our necessary information on their website so that we could entice the filming industry, whether it's movie production companies, companies that are filming for commercials or other types of advertisements, that we would show them the beauty or the benefit of coming to our community to do filming. Part of that, however, comes with the fact that we would need to, and we've already prepared it, and I do have to, I want to give a thank you to Jay Given. He has been working with me for approximately six months now or more in putting together the necessary database that we'll need to send into this Mass Film Office to give them all the good information about the town and reasons why they should come here to film. That includes providing them with a listing of all the appropriate sites that are, that would be attractive to the filming industry, and it's quite an extensive list. There's also the support facilities that the filming industry is looking for in terms of, you know, restaurants, hotels, livery service, businesses that would rent lifts and things like this, all the different support industry that needs to be around. And, you know, amazingly, with our positioning in central Massachusetts, we have all that, if not within town, within a very short distance from town, so that we're perfectly placed. So we brought this concept to the Economic Development Committee several months ago, and they said, yes, they would endorse and support moving ahead with this, and that we should bring this to the Board of Selectmen. So what you have in front of you tonight is a proposed set of documents which includes a film permit guidelines, which would be posted on the Mass Film Office website, and an application, which any production company would have to fill out if they were interested in filming in the town. And basically, what this does is that it, you know, it establishes a very basic permitting fee, a fee per day. In this draft, I'm suggesting $25, which appears to be the average of what other communities are charging. And then it also outlines that any production facility who does film in town, they would need to get a permit from the Board of Selectmen after identifying all of the necessary town services that would need to be paid for by the production company for the purpose of filming in the town. And that might do with police details, it might do with DPW for road closures, it might have to do with having the fire department on call for additional details, what have you. So these two documents, between the guidelines and the permit, it would establish the parameters under which a production company could come into town, it would establish the permitting process, it would establish how fees would be established, and then it would rely on the Board of Selectmen to give the final approval on that after there's been sign-off by the Chief of Police, Public Works, and the Fire Chief. And so I'm just asking that the board allow us to move ahead with this, whether, you know, you want to take some time to review this and then have a final vote on these actual documents. But I'd like to have these documents be in place before we really put all of our information on the website, because, not that I think we're going to be inundated with requests to start filming in town, but I do want to have everything in place once we put all the full information on the website.
I just, anybody have any questions in regards to?
I think it's a great idea. I think it's something we've been working on a while.
So the, go ahead.
I would just, who would be signing? Would it be, like, say it comes to us, would it be approved and signed by us?
The final permit would not be finalized until it was signed by the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen.
Need the only on this page three, is the right phone number.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for catching that.
So it says the requirement of the permit is a general liability insurance and the amount of, is that only if they film on town? What if they film on private property? Does the town still get a policy for the town?
If they're filming in town, we still get a per-day fee?
I understand that, but how about the insurance?
But they also have to get the permission, written permission, of the private property owner. We can't dictate what conditions a private property owner might set, but if they're going to be doing anything, I mean, with any filming production company, if you've gone through an area where there's a filming crew on location, you'll see that they need to use town property because they're staging on the roadways, they're using parking areas, they're using town buildings, they're, you know, they're using a lot of different town services in that process. So that's why we need, the town needs their liability insurance certificates.
And the 25 a day is just for the fee, it gets them nothing. If we need trucks, if we need to do extra work, that would all be.
They get charged for everything. And what we do is, we require that they go to the police department, they go to the fire department, they go to DPW, and they explain through the comprehensive application with, you know, site plans that shows what's going to be where. They work with that department, had to determine exactly what support do they need from that department. An estimate of cost is established, and so it's those costs added up, plus the daily fee, that they have to pay to the town in advance. And then if there are additional fees, you know, if they go above and beyond that, we would charge them for that additional time, say they're extended and they're filming for whatever reason, we would charge them for the additional time as well.
And I'm sure we didn't invent this one, I'm sure we found it from other towns.
This was the best of the samples that I've received. This comes mostly from the town of Hadley.
Okay.
I have a motion to a food, film permit guidelines, is that what you want?
Do we have to have a public hearing because it's, we're setting a fee?
That's a good question. It's not under a policy. You could establish it as a policy if you'd like, and we could set up a hearing.
All fees, I thought, needed to go to public hearing under a?
That's a really good question. I don't have the bylaw in front of me.
So do you want to just put it off till the next meeting, and we'll look into that?
We will look into that, and if it's, if a hearing is necessary, we'll schedule that, probably for the September 19th meeting.
Yeah, if that's, if that's all right with the board, then that's what we'll do, we'll just put it off. Okay. Consider voting to award a three-year contract for Regional Resource Group for the Assessing Service and authorize the town administrators to sign the contract.
So the assessors have used and outsourced assessing service for a number of years now. The contract expired, we went through an RFP process to obtain proposals for a new contract. The current vendor, RRG Associates out of Leominster, was the only firm to submit a proposal this time. Obviously, they meet all of the requirements. Their costs are excellent. For the first year, they're actually charging us $100 less than they charged us in FY18, and then it's merely a 2% increase in years two and three of this contract. So I would recommend that the board go ahead and sign this contract. I did check with the Chairman of the Board of Assessors, and he's in agreement with this.
This is the current group we have?
It is, RRG. They do a great job.
All right, so the total three-year contract is $201,000. Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion approve.
I'll second.
Motion is second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye opposed. Anita, so you're going to?
I'll sign that one.
Sign this here, so I'll leave it in here?
Thank you.
Review and approve the action items for the chosen FY19 Select Board and Town Administrator goals.
Would you like me to run through these quickly, or just summarize?
I think we've already ran through them a couple times, if anybody needs, we've kind of, usually we have them on a slide, on a projector, but that's fine, I mean, whatever the board wants.
Summarize and we'll sign with you.
Summarize, yep. Okay.
So the board developed a number of goals this year, and I'll just go through them. The first one was to develop a policy for the funding of our other post-employment benefits, or OPEB benefits liability, and that's to start funding the trust fund. So that's the, one of the goals that were developed. The second one was to minimize the tax impacts of annual budget increases or debt-excluded projects for our residents. The third goal was to enhance the island at the intersection of Route 12 and Beaman Street. The fourth goal was to develop a formal communication plan and policy, a draft of which has been provided to the board. The fifth goal was to evaluate the feasibility and effectiveness of a merger of the Cemetery Department into the DPW. The sixth goal was to develop a bylaw which regulates the adult-use marijuana business to the benefit of the town. Obviously, that's already in process, and hopefully will be completed by the October Town Meeting. And the last goal was to develop the town facility management position. So these are not in any priority order, but these were the goals that were set by the Board at the workshop that we had this summer. In this document, I've provided a basis of what success would look like, so that we have something to measure against, and I've put forward some suggested action steps and due dates. I've also identified the necessary personnel, town officials, staff, et cetera, that would likely be associated with the actions of each of these goals.
Does anybody have any questions regarding this process?
So like on the hour, on Route 12, when are we going to start working on that? October 18? You want to have two people, two members?
I thought it was helpful last year that for each of the goals, we identified two members of the group, one or two members of the group to work on it.
I would be interested in getting involved in that, if that's the only one, I think. So John and I asked on that, if that's all right with the board?
How many?
Is that all right with the board?
One by me. Do you want to vote?
Do you want to vote, do you want to vote on that now, Anita, or do you need a vote?
I'm not sure you need a vote as to which members.
So John and I will do that one. Is there any other? Anybody else that wants to be involved in certain?
Can we have the beautification, is that?
That's a carryover, and actually, that's something that's going to be on your September 5th agenda.
Okay. And then we also have the survey that Raj and I are working on.
Yes.
I don't know who's working on the beautification. You and.
I and I.
Black derobe.
Black derobe.
John's been at every meeting, kept giving you.
I will, if anyone else wants it, I'll be the BOS liaison for the OPEB liability piece.
Okay. Any other interest in needed, do you need?
The other items, you know, we can identify who would work on them if necessary when we bring it back to the board at, you know, at the specific agenda times.
So that one does say, the communication plan says, Board of Selectors has a subcommittee to work and review further development in plan policies in September. So do you want to?
You can put that on the September agenda.
Everybody's interested in the other one draft. Well, the cemetery, we already really have a subcommittee currently for the cemetery, correct?
That was John and?
Me and John. No.
No.
No, for the.
Those were the negotiation, those were you and I.
Yeah, it was John and I, I believe, so we'll just.
Continue with that.
Because I don't think it's really any different than, oh, no, wait, this is, this is different, so, yeah, I have no problem, I can stay and work with John on that. If anybody else is interested, though, we'll just put off the other ones.
Chris, I think you should do number six.
What is six, the bylaw? Yeah, this one's almost done. This will be the one that we finish, so I'll definitely take this one. Okay, so the other ones we'll look at maybe, and then maybe at a future meeting, we have a better presentation so the public can see what we're reading.
Mm-hmm.
And now we can go to Town Administrators' Reports, the Tivnan Drive RFP.
We had 100 people.
We've never, ever talked about this. What do you have to say about this?
We did another RFP, and we received zero proposals. We had one company request the RFP packet, and we received no proposals.
Okay, I think we just have to give it back to the state.
Keep trying.
No, no, we've tried. So now we'll just wait for someone to come forward, and then we'll, yeah, if there's anything else people want to do, I don't think. We should send out another RFP.
Do it once a year, I don't know, once every two years or something like that?
Yes, we can put on the agenda to do it.
We'll do that for future goals.
Do it every year, but, well, since we have the RFP, I mean, it would be just a matter of.
Simple updating.
What's the cost and time commitment to do that?
There's very little cost, it's just the legal ads that are required. The timeframe, because it's an RFP process, it typically takes six weeks or so at the max.
I'm talking town employee man-hours.
So in terms of updating the document from now on?
An hour or so?
Little.
Okay.
Little to nothing.
Okay. Interesting.
All right, the next item is the, just to remind people of the submission deadlines for the, the dates by which you have to submit articles for the October 15th Town Meeting. So we're gearing up, obviously, for the October 15th Town Meeting. The deadline for any money-related article is Friday, August 31st. The deadline for any non-money article is Friday, September 7th. If anyone has any articles, they should be submitted to the Town Administrator's Office. However, if it's a resident who's submitting a citizen's petition article, or what's referred to as a ten taxpayer petition, they would first have to take that document to the Town Clerk's Office to have her certify that all the petition signers are confirmed as registered voters, and then it needs to be brought to the Town Administrator's Office. So people need to leave themselves enough time to get that Town Clerk certification done to still meet the deadline of either August 31st or September 7th.
So just in regards to the, to the goal in regards to the marijuana bylaw, when can we, as a board, discuss what other articles we want to put on the?
That's going to be on your September 5th agenda, meeting agenda?
Okay.
Yep. The study committee is meeting again on the 20th, next Monday, to hopefully finalize the zoning bylaw. There's been discussion at several of their meetings about whether or not it would be appropriate to also have an art. appropriate to also have an article on the October town meeting warrant to ban, totally ban, the adult-use marijuana within the community. The study committee felt that it wasn't their position to make a decision on that, that it should be something addressed by the Board of Selectmen. So, that discussion will be started on your September 5th agenda.
Right, yeah, 'cause, I mean, I just thought the last time, people wanted more information, and we're trying to get more information also.
Related to that, you know, when do we send that bylaw to the planning board?
Well, we're gonna meet the 20th.
20th after that?
Yeah, we'll probably, I think that we have a timeline set in place, and I believe the 20th meeting, if everything's all set, we can move it to the planning board, because I think it's all set, as far as we're concerned.
But that has to come to the Select Board, right?
I don't know, whatever the process has to be after the 20th.
Do we have enough time?
You, as a board, are meeting on September 5th, so that's a non-money article. So, that could be voted at the September 5th meeting, and then referred to the planning board, but my concern there is to make sure that you're leaving the planning board enough time to hold the necessary hearing. You could vote tonight to authorize the Marijuana Study Committee to just simply forward it to the planning board after the meeting.
I would ask that, if the board's alright with that, I mean, we-
That would be the best option.
I mean, and then they're gonna have public meetings, I just wanna give them enough time, if that's alright with the board.
I'll make a motion to allow that.
I'll second.
Motion is second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye opposed?
While we're talking articles, I had a future agenda item. Have any of the-
Add to that point, John.
Well, it's an article, it's a one article question. Have any communities adopted a 3% local sales tax surcharge for marijuana facilities?
That's also been under discussion at the study committee level, and that would require a separate bylaw as well. It wouldn't be appropriate to put it in the zoning bylaw, so it would be a separate vote that would have to be taken at town meeting.
So, realistically, that hasn't been started, to try to get, make that happen by the October town meeting, probably not feasible.
It could, it could be done if you, you know, decide to do so at your next meeting?
I'm just, why would it be a bylaw? Didn't we just, for instance, the restaurant tax, we don't have a bylaw for that, we just voted to-
What CMRPC said was that it would not be appropriate to put in the zoning bylaw, that it would have to be a separate article.
No, I understand that, but does it need to be a bylaw to charge the tax?
Or is it just a?
We just voted, I know the, yeah, I know we just voted for the restaurant tax. I think at one meeting, we just voted to start charging-
I'll double-check that for you.
7.5.
If, I mean, if we're gonna go down this road, I'd like to at least bring to the board to get everybody's opinion, to see if we can make that happen, if the board wants to put it on, and then the town agrees, make that happen at the October town.
Right, if it has to go in front of the town, at the town meeting, I don't know if the .75, isn't it .75 for restaurant tax? I don't know, I didn't see if that went to town meeting.
I don't think it did, I think we just approved that here.
And I think there's a gas tax, we didn't do that, but that's another one that we could do. So, yeah, if it needs to go on the, I don't see why we couldn't put it on the October.
I thought it was gonna have to be a whole new bylaw, but that's-
I don't know, if it does, then, yeah, that's a good idea.
I'll have an answer for the study committee's Monday night meeting.
Oh, I'll definitely put it on our next agenda, because I don't think it's-
The next item, DPW paving, Butch already gave an update on that, so we'll skip over. The next is the update on the building inspector hiring. We did receive four applications for the building inspector position. We had interviews held on Monday. We have one very strong candidate, we're in the process of checking references. I will hold this process for another week, and assuming references come in as expected, I'm hoping that I'll have a candidate available to present to the board for the September 5th meeting.
Have we put any thought out to making this a facilities manager also?
As I mentioned before, what I'm gonna do is determine the feasibility of the candidate that we hire, as to whether or not it would be appropriate to combine that into that job description, or hire that person as a second additional job duties above and beyond the building inspector. Our top candidate that we're looking at right now has facility management experience, so it would be very feasible. It's, you know, it would be a decision as to whether or not the timing of that would work, if the dollars of that would work. If it doesn't, then I'll be coming back to the board for us to move ahead with that RFP for outsourcing facility management services.
I agree with John, let's try to, so the gentleman knows that that could be a possibility?
It hasn't been fully discussed, that'd be part of the discussion I have with him after the, we checked to see whether references come through, okay.
Right, I would, yeah, I mean, if he seems to be qualified to do that, I would talk to him now, and see if we can merge that all together, you know, make him full-time, and then-
That'd be a great idea, I think.
Just wanted to let the board know that we did submit our LUCA documentation to the US Census Bureau. Under the Local Update of Census Addresses process, we found 400 housing units that were missing from the US Census Bureau records. So, this is important, because Massachusetts loses $1,000 per person in the annual federal funding, if those individuals are not counted on the census, so it's important that we identified those extra 400 housing units. Provides them with the information they need to have a fully-vetted census database that they're working off of. Under grant reports, we do have two new grants that we've received. The first is, we did receive confirmation from the state that they have allocated $150,000 to West Boylston for the purpose of funding architectural design for the renovation of the fire station. This is something that had been put in by Representative Jim O'Day, and he was champing on this for us, and we did receive confirmation that it was included in the final budget. So, we'll be working with them for the necessary paperwork that needs to take place from now.
And we'll bring that, this information now to the FISP committee, and we'll start possibly the process of that.
At the next meeting. Mm-hmm. Once I get a better understanding of when the money's available, then we can discuss at the FISP level what we do in terms of acquiring architect for those services. And then also, under the marijuana study process, we are using CMRPC, our regional planning agency, for assistance in the development of this proposed zoning bylaw language, and this is done as a Division of Local Technical Assistance grant, that we're getting the benefit of through CMRPC. The exact value of that grant is yet to be determined, based on the number of man-hours that CMRPC is providing in that process. So, we'll be adding those two grants to our grant spreadsheet and quarterly reports. In terms of the FY18 budget closeout, I had hoped that I would have more information on the FY18 budget closeout for this meeting, but the town accountant is still working on that, so we will have the details available for our September 19th meeting. But we did find that the final FY19 state aid amounts, our local receipts versus subtracting our charges, ended up being $3,280 below our budgeted numbers, which is not bad, that's certainly something we can work within. We've actually taken the difference of that and absorbed it into the overlay amount, so that we still have the budget at $24,878 for our FY19 budget, so we're in good shape for FY19. In terms of other updates, just wanted to let the board know that that longstanding lawsuit that Dr. Tashin put against Chief Minnick and Etall, meaning the town of West Boylston, we have received written confirmation that Dr. Tashin's appeal of the court's original decision, which ruled in favor of the town, meaning it dismissed his case, his appeal failed also, so that case has now been dismissed.
One one.
And then, we have the October 13th townwide cleanup coming up, we're still moving ahead with plans for that Saturday, October 13th cleanup day. The rain date is September, October 20th. We have a logo now for the project, and we put together a great poster. So, this, I really wanna give thanks to the, to our resident members of the committee that are working on this, to develop the logo. Our logo is Team Up to Clean Up, so the poster says Team Up to Clean Up, West Boylston Townwide Cleanup Day, Keeping Our Town Beautiful. The webpage that they're helping us put together will go live next week, and it will be updated through the help of these resident volunteers, so that we can keep it fully up to date on all the details of who has volunteered to help clean up in the different streets or town areas, and what sponsors we have putting forward for the event. So, we're looking forward to it, and I'm hoping that members of the Board of Selectmen will volunteer to do cleanup on your streets. So, we're still looking for volunteers, people can contact me by phone or email, if they're willing to volunteer.
Here we go.
Do we still plan to have in the mailer for town meeting, something on this?
Yes, we will have many bits of information that'll be going out, all different forms.
A few things I'm looking into, the bags, I don't think that's gonna be a problem. I know you said you purchased some, but-
We do have some if-
I think the state, the state will give us some.
Yep, and-
Talk to MSDOT.
Yeah, so we're looking at, you know, trying to get some business to sponsor, some of the supplies that need to be purchased for this event. You know, we have gloves that we've got to provide to people, the grabbers to pick up some of the, either sharp or questionable trash. We're looking to, you know, get some water for the volunteers, we're looking to get t-shirts for the volunteers, we're looking to get some refreshments to give the volunteers, you know, when they come back after cleaning up their areas. So, our next meeting is this Friday morning at 10:00, and we'll be working on some of those details.
And then, regards to the t-shirts, I still, I still should be able to get an answer for that.
Great, thank you.
So, I mean, if you could send me, do you have that logo electronically?
I do.
I can see if that might be the answer.
Is there time yet for start and finish time?
It's 9:00 AM to 12:00 noon, and, you know, people are also encouraged, if they, if for some reason they cannot do the cleanup on that day, if they wanna do the cleanup in advance, please, you know, we'll get them the supplies in advance, and they can either hold on to the trash bags and put them out that day, or they can drop them off at DPW. We will work with anyone who's willing to help with the cleanup.
Great.
And that's it for the town administrator's report.
Other updates, any questions for the town administrator, anybody? Nope. Okay, move on to Senior Center Project update. I don't know, moving right along.
We got the, the roof is finished, the window's being put in, and it should be weather tight in the next couple of weeks, so we are really moving along now. The site work again next week. Coming along.
Okay, so invoices, CMB Associates invoice 5818 for $9,817.50. And then, second invoice is 5825 for $5,913.51. Do I have a motion? Have a motion and a-
Second.
Second. Any other discussion, hearing none, all in favor? Aye opposed? RAC Builders Incorporated invoice number four for $491,837.
So, more?
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion, hearing none, all in favor? Aye opposed? Collier International invoice number 21738 for $9,216.67, and invoice number 21924 for $9,252.05.
So, more? Second.
Have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye opposed? Alliance invoice number 59580881 for $3,049.
So, more?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye opposed? Okay, KP Law, this was brought over from the last meeting, invoice number 116979 for a one-time charge of $425.50, for one charge of-
So, second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Is this for Senior Center?
Oh, no, he wasn't there.
It was for the Senior Center, correct?
It's associated with looking into the issue of potentially putting a claim against the demolition contractor.
Right, and we figured this would, should go into here, and in the future, this will go, not during, not part of the construction. So, I have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye opposed? Yankee Engineering in Testing invoice number 25137 for $753.
So, more?
Have a motion and a second, any other discussion, hearing none, all in favor? Aye opposed? Reimbursement to the Police Department Supply Line for AED unit in Cabinet invoice, Physio Controls Incorporated invoice number 118054900 for $1,995.
A lot of AEDs, that invoice number.
Yeah, yeah, that was started at 1:00 in July.
So, more?
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second. So, just to clarify, this was purchased by the police chief, and we all agreed that it was part of the construction project, because it was supposed to be part of the construction-
It's a mandated component of the cells.
For the cells, so that's why it's a reimbursement, so. Motion is second. Any other discussion, hearing none, all in favor? Aye opposed? Bounty and invoice number 829251573 for $217, and this is all part of that same issue. Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion, hearing none, all in favor? Aye opposed? Concurrent on the appointment of Mark Freedon to-
Mr. Chairman, one more item under the Senior Center Project update. The FISP did approve change order number two for RAC Builders, and that was in the amount of $46,491. It's change order number two.
Okay, so, and, RAC Builders.
This was voted to be recommended for approval by FISP.
For $46,491, do I hear a motion?
So, more?
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye opposed? Okay, thank you. Now, concurrent on the appointment of Mark Freedon to the Economic Development Task Force, effective August 16, 2018, for a term to expire April 30, 2020.
So, more? Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Is there a form with that? I didn't see anything written up, and this is not a reappointment, correct?
This is a new appointment, I did not include the form.
Okay, so, we don't know really anything about his background.
Mark Freedon is a member of the planning board?
Right.
So, I think that's good for the public to know, that's why I'm-
Just a little update, Sean, he was a member, as a planning board member, of the Economic Development Task Force.
Okay.
And then he, somebody else would reappoint that, so he wanted to be a citizen appointee, because one of the persons dropped out.
Okay, thank you.
He's on various other boards, too. He's on CMRPC.
Okay, do we vote on that? I don't think we vote on that, I have a motion and a second.
No, I haven't heard a vote.
Motion and a second, any other discussion, hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Concurrent on the appointment of Mitchin Fowler to the Celebration Committee, effective August 16, 2018, for a term to expire April 30, 2021.
Ms. Fowler's a member of our Board of Health, and she's looking for this as another opportunity to volunteer for the town. She and other friends of hers are very interested in re-establishing the other celebration activities in town, such as the scarecrow contrast and things like that. So, this is the first of the two additional seats that we added to the Celebrations Committee that will be filled.
So, more?
Second.
Motion and a second.
Now, this is completely different, it's a Celebration Committee.
This is the Town Celebration Committee.
I understand that.
People do get confused, there's a Town Celebration-
It's a Celebration Committee, it's a private organization.
Yes.
This is the town organization, so who's currently on? There's already people on this that handle the bandstand.
There are, there are three gentlemen who are on the Town Celebration Committee that handle the Memorial Day Celebration.
Yeah, right, okay. So, I have a motion and a question.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Is it time, because we get these two groups confused, that I don't know, maybe we should rethink of renaming this? I'm just putting that out there, because I do know people do get confused, one, when they get asked for money to donate to different causes, so I'm just suggesting that maybe for a future thought process agenda, that we either come up with another name, or help people to understand, as you just said, that this is the town one, Mr. Chairman, so, just little suggestion.
Yeah, we can look at that, and change the name, maybe. Have a motion and a second, any-